Almighty Father, please look over us and provide wisdom as we do the business of the city. Help us make good decisions for the city as a whole. Look over, please, all of our men in uniform, serving here and abroad. Make sure they're safe, as they do their duties for this country. In thy name, amen.
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 Thank you, Councilwoman Bazilo. As I look over at the council, we're all here except Councilwoman Osborn, who is ill this evening. So could I please have a motion and a second to excuse her for this evening's meeting?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion from Councilwoman Loretano and a second from Councilwoman Barber. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bazilo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Barber?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passed six-zero.
Thank you very much. There, we have no communication tonight, so now is the time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda item. Do we have?
Yes, Mayor, I have one speaker card, Larry Bach.
Okay. Is Mr. Bach here? I know there was a question in his communication whether it was tonight or the next meeting, so... That's not Mr. Bach. Calling one more time for Mr. Bach.
Is it a non-agenda item? Non-agenda item?
Non-agenda.
Okay. We have one more. Oops. Michelle, I'm not sure how to...
Quadra.
Yes, Michelle Quadra. And while you, before you begin, I would like to inform you that the council will listen. We may take any of the following actions. We can respond to criticism. We can press the staff to investigate and report on the matter. Or repress that the matter be scheduled in a future agenda. You have three minutes. The yellow light in buzzer will let you know when you have 30 seconds left to speak.
Okay.
So before you begin, thank you. Before you begin, Michelle, please speak clearly and identify yourself in your address, okay?
Okay. My name is Michelle Quadra. I am a director on the board of directors for the local Goodyear Little League. My residence is 14199 West Columbus Avenue in Goodyear.
Thank you.
Basically, my purpose for being here tonight is to share a few things with the council on what's happening with Goodyear Little League this year. We're very excited. We're getting ready to hit, to start off our ninth season. With that being said, we've added our challenger division this year, which is for those ages four to 18 with physical and mental disabilities, to be able to enjoy the game of baseball. So after years of trying to get that off the ground, this will be our inaugural year for that. With eight fields in the city of Goodyear, Goodyear Little League has been able to finally raise funds, and this year we'll be installing two scoreboards on city fields. We'll have one scoreboard going in at Goodyear Community Park, and the second one will be going up at Foothills Community Park. And those will be unveiled on opening day, April 6th. My main purpose for being here this evening is Goodyear Little League was approached by the Arizona Diamondbacks two weeks ago about Goodyear Little League in the city of Goodyear hosting a fan fest. The date that we have both agreed upon would be March 30th. It's kind of the end of the spring training. It's a kickoff to the Little League season, and we're looking to do it as an evening event over at the Goodyear Community Park. Myself, Jim Beaumont, who is the president of Little League, Troy Mickelson, and Dave Seed, both from the Parks and Recreation Department, were on site last Thursday and met with two Diamondback representatives to do a site visit. They were completely impressed and have the confidence in Goodyear Little League, as well as the city of Goodyear, to help support this.
Great. Thank you very much. Can we make any comment on this at all? No, we're gonna, I just want the public to know how...
Okay.
The statue has tied our hands.
Right.
So thank you very much for coming this evening and your message. Did I get away with that one? All right, that's, no more speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Let's go to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda items 6.1 to 6.5 by title only?
Item 6.1, approved draft minutes of a special meeting and a regular meeting held on February 11th, 2013. Item 6.2, approve rescheduling the March 11th, 2013 regular council meeting to March 18th, 2013, due to several council members attending the National League of Cities Conference. Item 6.3, adopt resolution 13-1537, authorizing the city manager or designee to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Avondale for city of Goodyear staff to perform engineering inspection services in the city of Avondale for compensation identified in the agreement, providing for an effective date. Item 6.4, approve the map of dedication for portions of North La Maroma Drive, West McKenzie Drive, and West Campbell Avenue within the Sadea planned area development. Item 6.5, approve a request to amend stipulation number 11 of the special use permit for the Rock of Refuge Church located 877 North Saraval Road to allow the construction of two-story buildings with a maximum building height of 30 feet, not including parapets, as otherwise allowed by the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I have a question on 6.5.
615. Who would like to address that question?
I assumed it was Steve, since his name was on the paper. Steve is, I read it. Honestly, it concerned me at the time, and I was curious. Did we, when this was originally done back in 2003, were there plans to do a charter school at that time?
Mayor and council, there were no plans for a charter school.
So, we're obviously changing this stipulation to now add a charter school, which is going to increase, this is no longer simply just a church. And I don't mean that negatively by saying just a church, but we have had several charter schools in the community that have necessitated a traffic light be installed now. And I'm concerned about that occurring on Saraval. Have we looked at that by adding this stipulation and allowing, to allow them to include a charter school on the site, how that's going to impact the surrounding area?
Mayor, council members, part of the answer is they're currently going through site plan review, and they are currently preparing a traffic impact analysis that they will deliver to staff. So our engineering staff, that is one of the aspects of the development that they need to look at. Interior circulation, how that circulation is going to affect public roadway, so that is something that staff is, needs to look at, still.
And will that come before council?
No, sir.
Okay, those are the questions I have, thanks.
Anyone else?
Mayor, I have a procedure question.
All right. Councilwoman Campbell?
Yes. Mr. City Manager, when we have a consent item, do we not get the staff report on it rather than we just get the recommendation?
Mayor and council, staff report should be included. It's just not openly presented, so you would not have, for example, a PowerPoint presentation, but there should be a staff report.
It's on your agenda. It was on your, it was on your coactive study.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Could I please have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I hear a motion by Councilwoman Loretano and a second by Councilwoman Bazilo. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Barber?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Bazilo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passed six-zero.
Thank you very much. Let's go to the business item. So now we're looking at doing, I guess you want me to read this first before we start this. We will now conduct a public hearing to consider approving a use permit to allow convenience use McDonald's drive-in, drive-through on a 0.74 acre commercial pad within the Mountain Ranch Marketplace Commercial Center. Open public hearing. Karen Craver will present.
Thank you, Mayor. McDonald's is proposing to open a restaurant at Mountain Ranch Marketplace in Australia at the northwest corner of Australia Parkway and Elliott. The Starpoint Residence Club is just across Elliott to the south. Restaurants are permitted by right in the C2 General Commercial Zoning District, which is the underlying zoning of this portion of the Australia PAD. Restaurants were also identified as permitted on the Marketplace Master Plan approved in 2008. This parcel identified in red is the .74 acre development-ready pad the McDonald's is proposing to build on. It's just off the Marketplace entrance drive from Elliott Road. This is the Chase Bank here, and this is the pad that Walgreens just opened up on. And there was a traffic signal just installed here at this intersection. Although the restaurant is a permitted use, McDonald's is in this public hearing process to obtain a use permit for the convenience use of the drive-through. Staff has determined that the request meets the zoning ordinance criteria for approval of a use permit, and that the request falls within the parameters of the additional criteria when evaluating a convenience use. On December 17th, we conducted a citizen review meeting at Starpoint. The reaction to the application was mixed. At the January 16th P&amp;Z meeting, the commission concurred with staff that the approval criteria had been met, and they recommended approval six to zero. It should be noted that although the use permit request includes a request for approval of 24-hour operations, the McDonald's folks tell me they don't plan on that occurring until several years out, when more business is occurring in the shopping center. So staff is recommending approval of the use permit, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. And I see we have two speaker cards on there. Are there any others besides these two? All right, then... I'll go ahead and start while you're copying that for me. All right, let's start out with the first one, Nancy McPhelan.
Good evening.
Yes, please state your, your name again and your address.
Nancy McPhelan. I'm a resident of Australia Mountain Ranch.
Thank you.
I am totally and completely opposed to McDonald's coming into EMR, whether it's a drive-in, whether it's a standalone building, whether it's 24/7. I move up the EMR to get away from this. The way this was presented to our community is unacceptable. In our annual meeting in August, Newlin was asked whether a McDonald's was going to be coming to Australia. They knew nothing about it. Suddenly, December 17th, we have a meeting where McDonald's is being presented. When we went into the meeting, you got the sense that it had already been pre-approved. We asked questions. We asked, what was the population required for McDonald's? We were told 32,000. I came to a planning and zoning meeting, turned around and spoke to the gentleman for McDonald's. They told us 16,000. I now hear it's 20,000. When are we going to get the truth? I strongly feel that this is being pushed through because Kitchell needs to fill that facility there. There have been businesses that have committed to our community early on, have been very successful. McDonald's is going to come in and shut them down completely. I do not want this in our community. It's bad enough I have to come up the street on Australia Parkway and smell incense, and city council does nothing about that. I then further have to drive into my community, and I'm going to smell fryo later grease that hasn't been changed for days? I'm sure you can see how frustrated I am with this. I do expect city council to pay attention to the residents in our community and vote this down.
Thank you. The next one is Carol Rosano.
Okay, my name is Carol Rosano. As a resident of Australia...
State your address, please, Carol.
18315 West Sweet Acacia Drive.
Thank you.
As a resident of Australia, many residents I were misled by McDonald's issue. We went to the December meeting, which turned out to be an open forum that was held at the Starpoint Residence Center. The information provided seemed like it was yes McDonald's, no McDonald's. The real issue was yes or no drive-through. I discovered this at the zoning board meeting. At the Starport meeting, residents were encouraged to write their concerns to Karen Craver, I'm sorry, Craver, at the Planning Department of Goodyear. She was to gather information and present it to the boards. Hopefully, you guys received the information. I don't, I personally don't want a drive-through. If we were near a highway and people are going to be, pick up a quick snack and get back on the freeway, there may be a need for a drive-through. But we're a small, small, quiet community that doesn't need it. To be away from such traffic is why I moved eight miles south of I-10. The necessity of drive-through is questionable, because as I understand, McDonald's and Walmart is extremely profitable, and it doesn't have a drive-through. Okay, now I'm going to speak as a business owner. I don't, as a business owner, I don't want McDonald's to have a drive-through for many reasons. I'm glad the map is up here. My husband and I own Oasis Bagels. When we signed the lease, there was no drive-through. To change the rules just because someone with deep pockets wants a drive-through isn't fair. The added traffic of a drive-through will make the parking lot very congested. Anyone who parks perpendicular to the curb facing our store risks their life backing out of the parking spots there. For the past two and a half years, I've worked seven days a week, so I know what happens in the parking lot, and watch all those brake lights go on. McDonald's architect compared the drive-through with the Chase Bank and the Walgreens. However, their drive-throughs don't have parking spots surrounding the entrance and exits of the drive-through. They have more space to maneuver, and the parking spaces and the entrance, there aren't any parking spaces by the entrance and the exits. Many of the 32 parking spots will have, will be dangerous for the McDonald's, especially with the drive-through. You can't pull in and out of spots safely when cars are going by trying to access a drive-through. What consideration has been made for the traffic patterns from adding a drive-through? People will avoid the traffic light at Australia and Elliott, and they want to swing up by the Walgreens. This will affect people trying to get out from the parking spots up to Safeway, Great Clips, the Children's Academy, the other strip malls, and, yes, Oasis Bagels. The traffic flow does not allow easy access to Australia Parkway from McDonald's. If you look at this map, to get out of here, you can only turn right on Elliott. To make an illegal turn, you have to whiz through there to make a left. So getting back to Australia Parkway from this entryway isn't very simple. This is a small community, and drive-throughs not wanted or needed. Drive-throughs are for people in a hurry, and will make the parking lot more dangerous for the cars and pedestrians, drivers who look for the shortest and fastest routes to the main streets. The present stores in the center are Safeway, the yogurt store Subway, and our bagel shop. We have patio seating. With a drive-through, we'll get to look at the garbage and hear the drive-through and have the additional smell. The bagel store is the closest, and will be affected the most. Every day, we have people outside enjoying the view and beauty of the community. The drive-through would be most unpleasant with a traffic queue, the noise from the speakers, and the ordering, and the two-to-one concept will give us twice the noise. Why should one tenant make the other tenant suffer? The sidewalk, I hope you'll take a good look, I don't want to waste my time, but the sidewalk crosses a main street, a thoroughfare, and a drive-through. I just have a safety concern. Where will the drive-through QB block the thoroughfare? Our stores use that thoroughfare. Where will the deliveries be made? There's going to be a little congestion. According to McDonald's use narrative, the more active components are located to the rear of the sites as far as possible.
Thank you, Mrs. Rosano. Appreciate it.
Can I use my husband's time?
Pardon me? No.
I have one, no?
No, I'm sorry, you've had your time. But thank you very much.
Thanks.
The next speaker is Kathleen Fleming.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Kathleen Fleming. My address is 10907 South Santa Columbia Drive. I'm going to use my time to specifically speak on this 24/7 hour of operation. I read through the staff report. There is no compatibility. No other business in Australia is open 24/7. Since this is all one permit use, and that is specifically in there, I'd like the council to take a look at that and respectfully ask that you pull that portion out, if that's feasible, and not allow a 24/7. That is going to tax the police department. There is only one patrol officer in Australia on the overnight. There really is no reason to have 24/7 operation. I understand McDonald's is going to say and has said, but we won't do it if there's no need. Why open the door? Let's revisit it at another time, another, you know, if it, in the near future, or if in years to come, that's feasible in Australia, but we really don't need the 24/7 portion. And in all of this, I'd like you to consider taking that portion out and at least denying that portion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other?
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Now, may I have a motion and a second to consider the approving of the use?
Mayor, you need to close the public hearing?
I'm sorry. I do that so many times, don't I? Thank you very much. All right, so at this moment, do I need a motion to close this?
No.
All right, at this motion, we're going to close the public meeting, and I will ask for a motion and a second to consider approving the use permit?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
All right, I hear a motion by Councilwoman Campbell and a second by Councilwoman Loretano. Open for council discussion. Who would like to be first? Councilwoman Loretano?
I have, I have a couple of questions. What does, if someone could define what is permitted by right, and give us a little background and history of what the master plan that you mentioned in there, so that the public knows what those two terms mean? And then I've got a couple more follows, if it's okay.
Sure.
Mayor, if I may, councilwoman, when I say permitted by, by right, it means that a use is listed as a permitted use within the zoning district, in this case, C2. And if you meet the standards in that zoning district, such as minimum lot area, maximum height, minimum setbacks, then you are permitted by right to have that use. You know, you have to come in and go through a site plan, of course, but by meeting those standards, by it being a permitted use, you are allowed to have that by right.
And then also, you said it was master plan, it was already specified. Could you explain in more detail what that means?
Sure. This is the master plan for Mountain Ranch Marketplace. It was approved by staff. It was an administrative approval, approved by staff in 2008, and it listed 165,000 square feet of space. 140 of that, 140,000 of that was retail space, 25,000 was restaurant space. So it specifically called out 25,000 square feet of restaurant space as, as permitted uses within the center.
And I may have other questions, but I got one more right now. With regard to the times of the drive-through, I know there's been other drive-throughs that we have, I believe it was Panda Express down there on Australia, that we specifically did make it 24 hours originally, or we expanded later, or gave them the opportunity to come back? Have we done that in the past? Kind of think we did. I'm trying to remember from...
I'm not aware that we have restricted hours.
Yeah, I thought it was, the discussion was on business on McDowell and Litchfield. On the, you know, where McDonald's is, and there's businesses that sit behind, like the Steakhouse, and, and it seems to me that came up before council about limiting, when restaurants came in, they're limiting the hours. And also, at one time, I didn't know if it came up with where the wings, I should know...
The Buffalo Wild Wings.
Cornerstone, Cornerstone Shopping Center. I think, I think it was suggested at those times, but never was it agreed upon. But I remember, I can remember discussions during those times.
I was wondering if you've ever done that before?
They didn't, they never, no, they never put any requirements on them, but, but the public did come up and question that a couple, during those times.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think we talked about that in conjunction with the liquor license on the Pizza Place and the wings, their patio, using the patio and the restrictions on that. I believe there was some discussion on the use permit with the Panda Express, but I don't know if we ever put an hour restriction on it, but I know when it first came through.
I just remember discussion, that's all. Nothing ever came of it.
And I'd like to listen to the other comments and maybe come back to me?
Sure. Councilwoman Campbell?
My question is, could you point out, please, maybe you can use the map that's up, but show me where the drive-through is going to be, where you enter and exit with the drive-through, please?
I'll use this one. This is just the site plan for McDonald's. This is where the cars would begin to come into the drive-through. They would split off as, is the normal operation for McDonald's now. One, one lane would go this way, one lane would go this way, and then they both have menu boards there that they utilize. Then they, they work their way down along here and pay and pick up, and then come out here.
Or is the green a wall, or...
The green is the existing landscape buffer along that entrance drive that will remain and will be enhanced.
Okay, I walked that site twice today, and I was hoping that was the landscape, but I wasn't sure.
Yes. And it will be enhanced by, I'm sorry, Mayor, if I may, Councilwoman Campbell, it will be enhanced as well, that landscape buffer by McDonald's.
Okay, and there's no homes in the, in the immediate vicinity of those menu boards? Am I correct?
The closest homes are approximately 1,100 feet to the north, and that is beyond the back of the center, and then there's a hilltop behind that, and then those, those home sites are further beyond that.
Okay, is that the first gated community, once you go?
Yes.
Yeah, I drove that out as well. Okay, good.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Yes, Councilman Barber?
Mayor, I think tonight it's really important that we remember what our role is as council, and tonight we're here to vote on the drive-through at McDonald's. And I have given this issue so much thought and so much time, and, and the reason is because there's been a lot of discussion in Australia about having the McDonald's in the area. Right here is a petition with 75 signatures that have been collected in... Right here is a petition with 75 signatures that have been collected in favor of the McDonald's. A lot of the moms in the area are very happy that they'll have an air-conditioned place to take their kids in the summer, and a lot of families are very happy that they'll have another fast food option in the area. And to McDonald's credit, this is a company that gives back to the community. The Mellon family is very well-respected, very well-regarded, and I think that the positive of this is that they feel that they're ready to come into our community. Here is a petition of 137 people who do not want the McDonald's in the Estrella community. The petition says, "Estrella is built on a hometown feel away from the hustle and bustle, where families can easily engage in the outdoors and a healthy living lifestyle with neighbors, family, and friends." Let me make it perfectly clear, I am pro-business. The city is working so hard to bring all these businesses into our town, and we need the jobs, and I'm all for it, but I also think that we need to be a voice for existing businesses. The owner of a local mom-and-pop store in Estrella has told me that the day McDonald's opens its doors, that they will be shutting down because they cannot compete with dollar sodas. Now, please correct me if I'm wrong, but staff tells me there are only 10,400 people in Estrella. In addition to the Golf Course Grill, the Star Point Cafe, Papa John's, Taste of Italy, the sandwich shop in Safeway and Oasis Bagels, can our community really support yet another restaurant? I think we're going to find out really soon. So let's talk about this drive-through. Since the day I moved to Estrella back in 2005, my form of exercise is walking that community. I have two dogs, we walk all the time, I ride my bike, I ride with my daughter, and getting through that intersection, that Elliott intersection, from the Star Point over to San Gabriel is no easy feat. But, you know, my friend and I, on Saturday mornings, we ride over to the bagel shop with our kids, and we're standing out there, holding our arms up, just begging the traffic to stop so we can get across there. I have raised concerns on this issue ever since December with staff, and I thank staff for really looking into this and taking the time and really, really thinking this out for me. In the past two weeks, staff has conducted a traffic study at this intersection, and based on what has been explained to me, there's not a legal reason to vote no on this drive-through based on the traffic study that has been done. The zoning has been properly done, and despite my experience and concerns that other people have raised, this traffic study doesn't warrant any major safety improvements. I know there are 137 people who would be very, very disappointed if the McDonald's came in. I understand it, I get it, I signed that petition as well, but I have to be mindful of the law. McDonald's in Estrella was in the works long before I was appointed to council, and all I can do is to urge people to get involved in your local government, get involved with your HOA, and get involved in your local communities because you have a stronger voice. So I'm really on the fence about this one, but I just want you to know that I understand your concerns. Carol, I don't want you to go out of business. You know, I don't want to see any of those businesses go out of business up there. So this is a very, very difficult issue right now.
Councilman Vazillo?
The site plan of McDonald's?
You showed Councilmember Campbell the drive-through process. How are they going to be exiting?
Mayor, if I may, Councilman Vazillo, they will come out this way. They can either come to the right there, and come out along here, and come out here. They could go north, which takes you back up into the center, right in front of the inline shops, and then they could come down this way. They could also come this way and utilize one of the driveways onto Elliott or Estrella Parkway, particularly one where there's a new light now there in front of Walgreens.
Over by the Walgreens, okay.
Show me, I'm trying to picture that. Where is the actual, I'm trying to-
If you don't mind, I'll go back to this one.
Okay, I see Estrella.
Yeah, so they can either come out here and come out onto Elliott Road, which is restricted, or they can come out here and go down here, and they can come out here and continue on down Estrella Parkway. They could continue even further and go up in front of the bank and in front of the Walgreens and utilize the light there. So there's several different means of getting out of the site.
Yeah, let me ask you this, in the study, and Councilmember Barber probably mentioned it, is there any concerns that they'll go out and try to cut across there where the Star Point, to try to make a left getting out?
Well, you can't because it's got, it's divided.
It's divided?
The way the median is constructed, and forgive me, I don't know the technical terms, but those little fingers that come out from the median prevents you from being able to make that maneuver.
So they only have a couple of options if they want to leave Estrella?
Correct.
Or a U-turn at San Gabriel.
Or a U-turn at San Gabriel. On the, again, probably this one's probably more for the attorney. As far as the, I guess the zoning issues itself, they have a legal right to put, is my understanding, a restaurant at that location?
That is correct. As was referred to earlier on the underlying zoning, yes, as a matter of right, they could proceed through the site plan process and open a McDonald's without the drive-through. So that was handled at the zoning phase. So now you're at the administrative phase, which is evaluating the use permit, which is the more scrutinized use, and it's, you know, drive-throughs, gas stations, that's when the council normally issues a use permit for uses that are a little bit more intensive, a little bit more of an effect on the surrounding area. So you evaluate that criterion in deciding whether or not to issue a use permit. So you look at the traffic studies, noise, light, hours of operation, and look at the adjacencies to residential or other type uses that they may have impacts on. So you're using your administrative role in this matter and looking at those additional impacts.
Okay, and a follow-up on that question, from a legal standpoint on the use permit, okay? And again, we have to prove the use permit, but I'm sure there's certain legal parameters within that use permit in which they still have rights, in which there's some latitude, in which we can or we can't. I'm trying to draw some inference from our attorney, you know, if they, but I guess they have to meet all the traffic studies, they have to meet a safety issue. Can you give me some of the bullet points from the use permit from a legal standpoint, now I'm talking about?
Right. Things that are evaluated, or in the staff reports, what you should be looking at in making your administrative decision, you should be looking at the traffic studies and whether or not they support the issuance of a use permit for a drive-through, and I believe that's addressed in the staff report. Look at any adjacencies to residential, and whether or not that has an impact, and I believe that's not really indicated in this report. So, or any other impacts that are illuminated through staff or studies. So really, in this case, probably the traffic study is probably the most important thing you should be looking at, given the nature of this type of use.
Is there anything in the traffic study that would indicate a use permit not warranted?
Respectfully, Mr. Vazillo, you're asking for your legal advice. If you want my legal opinion, I'd probably advise that we go into executive session.
Except I think they have a traffic study to refer to, is that correct?
Mayor, thank you, and Councilman Vazillo, there was a traffic study that was done with the original approval for the entire center, and that traffic study was based on build-out of the center, the total 165,000 square feet, including the 25,000 square feet of restaurant space and drive-throughs. Our traffic engineering department reviewed that and felt that this restaurant, along with everything else that you see that isn't yet built on this master plan, is accounted for in that traffic study.
And I see our city engineer out there. Can you just confirm that for me there, Dave?
Sorry, did you have a question? I didn't-
Yeah, no, I mean, from a traffic engineer standpoint, I just heard from-
He just wants confirmation on the first study that was done, and if it's valid at this time, and if it's, the validity of the study when it was done is still valid at this time. Is that essentially what you want?
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Vazillo, I agree with what Karen just-
Can you pull that microphone up? Because we can't hear you.
Sorry, Mayor and Councilmember Vazillo, I do agree with what Karen just expressed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Councilman Loretano?
Yeah, I thank you for that information, because that's what I was kind of following up with, the specifics on the traffic, and I don't think, I think Councilmember Barber stated, we can't really be picking winners and losers because there's a legal right to have a business there. And Carol's Bagel Store is absolutely fabulous and has wonderful bagels, and I don't think you'll have a problem because legally, I think, I do have a concern a bit about the drive-through, the 24 hours up there. I don't have a problem with a late, but the 24 hours does kind of give me, I wonder if they'd be willing to cut that back at least initially, because really, there isn't any other 24-hour business. So that does one thing that does kind of, I live up there, by the way, of the people. McDonald's has always been a great partner, everything from the Ronald McDonald House, if anyone knows about that, to all the great works they do in the community with giving the kids the free breakfast before the Ames test, to the veterans' breakfast, they have been a wonderful partner in the community in Arizona as a whole. And for people like me, when we're just talking about the businesses, I understand that, and I have to look at it on the legal use permit issue, but when we look at, I think we're looking at two different types of businesses. For someone like me that doesn't even get home until 6:30 at night, a lot of places, you know, I don't have those options. So it does give options to a lot of working parents, which are actually pretty good, and I appreciate that, but I got to look at, is the traffic flow and the use permit, and my one question is, is there any flexibility on that 24 hours? I understand very early and, you know, mid-late, I guess.
I have one question, that, how late is Safeway open?
Mayor, if I may, and Councilwoman Loretano, what McDonald's has expressed to me is they wouldn't enact 24-hour operation until such time as the rest of the center did. Safeway is not open 24 hours, Walgreens is not open 24 hours, so, you know, until that occurred, and that was the environment there in the center, McDonald's would not operate at 24 hours either.
Would that be put in a form of stipulation so that it is on, I mean, as an agreement written for the-
Madam Mayor, members of the council, if you wish to impose that stipulation, you'd need to do it on the record.
And do the other businesses have that stipulation written?
No, you're only impacting the use permit, that's what's in front of me.
Okay, I'm just, okay. Any other, Councilman Stipp?
Does the, the Walgreens does not have a drive-through, is that?
Yes, they do. They have, I'm sorry, it's right along here, right along the north side of the building by that entrance drive.
Where the traffic light is now?
Yes.
Is that 24 hours?
No, but they're not 24 hours. So this, legally, obviously, we're not, we're bound to McDonald's, so we're not talking about that. We're truly talking about drive-through only tonight. This screams of kind of a, we may be locked in, so I'm not going to play around that, but the idea that we would approve a site plan that has this sort of potential in it in the middle of the parking lot screams of the Burger King that's tucked in behind two or three other stores at Litchfield and Indian School. You can't get in, you can't get out, it's one way in, one way out. As a city, I'm urging everybody, we've got to stop doing that. This is a horrible location for a fast food restaurant, and this is probably what it was designed for when we approved this site plan. It's a right turn-in, it's a right turn-in, it's a right turn-out. You have to drive through the entire parking lot in order to make your way back to Estrella Parkway, or we need to plan for a number of accidents to occur at San Gabriel and Elliott from people making U-turns coming out of there to head back briefly east before they head south. And we have to stop doing this to ourselves. I'm not particularly in favor of a 24-hour drive-through. The sense that I'm getting from listening to the attorney is that the drive-through issue may or may not result, but 24 hours, I don't even want to entertain that upfront. And if we've got the ability to, this is a different use. I realize Safeway isn't open, but it's not through there. I'm not in favor of a 24-hour drive-through at this location, but I really want to impress upon to staff that we don't do this. We are setting ourselves up in the future for this exact thing to occur over and over again, and we've got to stop doing it to ourselves.
Any other comments? Councilman Vazillo?
Karen, you had mentioned that McDonald's was receptive to not going to 24 hours until others within that shopping center were going 24 hours.
Mayor, if I may, Councilman Vazillo, I was just going to mention, there are representatives from McDonald's here tonight, and, you know, by all means, please speak to them rather than just-
Well, the reason why I'm asking, if they were, if they're receptive to that, would they be willing to agree to that here?
I would certainly think so, but the representatives are here.
Shall we call them up, please, at this moment? Mayor, are we asking them not to be open 24/7? Is that what we're trying to stipulate before we allow them to have a drive-through?
I think that's the question on the table, is that what you're asking, Councilman Vazillo?
Yes, I am.
No, what I'm asking is that, what I'm asking is, is Karen said, come on up, is they were, she's saying they were in agreement not to go 24 hours to at least somebody else in that shopping center went 24 hours, and I'm wondering if you're willing to agree to that, so that not the first one going 24 hours in the shopping center.
We are willing to, I guess I need to say my name, Gary Blough, area real estate manager for McDonald's in Arizona. Typically, when we do use permits, we include 24 hours so that in the event it becomes profitable, we don't need to resubmit, and that's the only thing that's in play here. We're not planning on 24 hours. If it will help make the decision, we're happy to withdraw that. Where you get into a little bit of trouble for the attorney over there is, are you going to administrate how late we can stay open, when we can open? And I can answer that. We'll probably start with probably 11:00 PM closing, and at 4:00, 5:00 is our typical opening. Sometimes if the franchisee sees a great deal of traffic prior to 5:00, they will open sooner than that. And so that's, but we have screens that we need to meet financially for what we call overnight sales. We don't expect that to happen until Estrella has about 30,000 people in it. So we are willing to withdraw that 24-hour operation, and I would assume that to mean any time between 1:00 and 4:00 AM.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Well, I'm last to speak here this evening, but the problem with doing the special permit with just certain hours, we didn't require that of the other stores that could be open for 24 hours, and we do have a health care that's going to be up there. I'm assuming they're 24 hours, is that correct? Banner will be 24 hours, okay? So we have a business up there 24 hours. Certainly, it's not, they're not comparable in their traffic, I'm not alluding to that at all. And I can understand Councilman Stipp's rigorous statement on the location of it. We do need to start thinking about that, but this is now and not then, and so I can't, I can't look at it quite that way. I agree with the, some of the concerns, but there are egress and, there are ways to get in and out of this shopping center. You don't always have to take that one road. You can go to the light over by the last building over there and get out in Estrella, so there is a way to do it. Is it a concern? Yes. Do I hope that the community will be aware of that? And at this point, I would never take my child from the Star Point across that road, even if that restaurant was not there, okay? It is not, I would not be doing that. I would take him up to the, I would take the time to walk to the corner and to cross with the light. Convenience is great, but sometimes convenience is dangerous, so as far as somebody complaining about that, without McDonald's, I wouldn't do that with my child, so I would be very cautious of that. You know, it's interesting, since I've moved to, I know my neighborhood, like many other neighborhoods, has requests all the time, the type of stores they want, and they're very insistent not to have them. I just look at the number of restaurants that requests I get from people all the time that just insist we have no more fast food- I just look at the number of restaurants that requests I get from people all the time that just insist we have no more fast food. They just do not want them. That's it. So, that's easy to say, but this is United States, and businesses have the rights. When you put out a plat like this, you invite them in, and you need to designate it early on. It's not fair. And I would be real disappointed for Mrs. Rosano to close her business so quickly by the actions that went on tonight, that, that the dedication you've made to that shop, that you would let it go so lightly. It is a bagel shop, and it definitely brings in a different group of people. And it, your restaurant is inviting where people want to come in and their morning coffee and get their bagel. I don't think the competition between the two is the same. If you market yours, you have a very nice village marketable message to give to the community. I think sometimes McDonald's, like Walmart, has been given a bad name. I think they have progressed in their food menu. I think they've become, you can eat a healthy meal at McDonald's. It's your choice. And unfortunately, we have a great number of communities and citizens who aren't disciplined in what they eat, and sometimes that's me. So, I'm right along with the rest of them, but I believe they have their rights, the way we have presented this, the way the plat was done, the way the planning was done. And I, I think that the law is on their side, and I will agree with many of the things. In fact, I want to compliment you, Councilman Barber, on your presentation. It was well thought out. You did a lot of investigation. But I have to look that we have 70 people that want it, and 131 out of how many people are up there at this present time? What's the population right now?
I was told 10,400.
10,000, so I'm looking at that saying, that's not a huge number of people that have come to the table, said that they don't want this McDonald's there. I think what you've heard tonight, McDonald Corporation, that you need to be a good neighbor, and that's very important to them, and wherever you can mitigate some of the problems and their fears about children's safety, and you need to take an active part in that up there. I'm not suggesting what it would be, but I think it needs to be drawn to the attention of the community. So, again, I go back to the legal rights that businesses have. If we went through every shopping center and polled the merchants when a new business is going to come in, and allowed them to make the decision that, I'm sorry, I don't want them because there are too much competition, I think we would be in trouble. And so, we cannot consider that set up the way the marketing is set up in this, in this day and age, so. And I think with that, we're going to have to take this to vote. Is there any other comments?
Mayor?
Councilman Campbell?
I just wanted to say, I, I didn't see the 130 whatever in opposition, so I'm not in that part of the equation. But I look at McDonald's as a community resource that the youngsters living up in Estrella that go to high school are going to be able to get jobs. And I know it's probably not the kind of job that you might envision, but it is, it teaches them so much, and they are an important part in our community. They give wonderful scholarships. And I'm very happy that they want to come into the community. They have every right to be there. And if Walgreens starts being open 24/7, which when people are sick and they need medicine in the middle of the night, they're going to be very grateful when Walgreens is open all night. So, if they open all night, are we going to allow McDonald's, if they have 30,000 or so people in Estrella be open all night? Is that what we're saying to them?
That's essentially what's on the table. Is that correct?
Is that what I'm understanding?
Madam Mayor, you've technically not amended the use permit application. So, if you're going to limit the hours, you need to go ahead and make an amendment and approve that amendment.
Well, we're getting it verbally, though.
Well, you need to roll, you need to, you need to actually amend the use permit and add a stipulation if you want to hold them to it later.
Okay, but then they'll have to come back. They'll have to petition us to change it, right?
You could do it a couple of ways.
Before you do that, I just want to know, then, does this cause any consternation with the other businesses that have not had to do that? I mean, so, I mean...
Yeah, Judge, no.
See, none of them have done it.
So, that, that's my, can they then come back? I mean, what is their legal rights if we make this decision?
Madam Mayor, I recall the discussions about limiting the hours. I don't recall if we ever did it. So, we'd have to research that. But certainly, you seek consistency in the application of your ordinances. But in a use permit, you're also allowed to look at the individual circumstances of the adjacent uses. So, perhaps they were in slightly different situations.
Well, I'd like to call the McDonald's people back up again one more time before we... Well, thank you for coming back up again. It's a concerned community, and I understand their concerns, and I want to make sure that they know that we've vetted this out this evening. So, tell me how you would feel about signing on to that you would limit your hours to a certain timeframe until other businesses within the, within the shopping center went to night hours.
I think your best bet is just to amend the motion and just restrict hours from, say, 1:00 AM to 4:00 AM, or 2:00 AM to 4:00 AM. That, you know, you know, whatever you feel comfortable, and that prohibits us from operating 24 hours without going back through the process.
All right, thank you for your...
Other than me telling you I won't do it till it makes money, I don't see any other way.
Thank you very much. All right, so he's given you something to think about. Are your comments on it? Councilman Loretano?
It was just what you were talking about, the businesses, Mayor. I think it's very important. We have a little bit of history about what Estrella was and what it was meant to be. I've lived out here since 1973, and Estrella, when it was first envisioned by Charles Keating, before it went to the RTC under the blast crash, was supposed to be a self-contained development. And that meant it was supposed to have everything, all shopping, business, a self-contained community. I think what you need to look at is Estrella was, for those people, maybe look back in the past. We will be in the future what Awatuki is now. Where we're Awatuki was probably in the early 80s, late 70s. I just want people to get that understanding of what Estrella was meant to be. It wasn't supposed to be a country community. It was supposed to always be a self-contained with shopping, and I believe that vision has changed, has continued, has not changed through the RTC and also through Sunchee and now through Newland. I believe that is still the vision, and it's always been the vision, and the plats have continued along with that vision. So, I just wanted to bring that forward. I don't think that was ever brought forward of what it was meant to be.
It's too bad. Karen, can you come back up again? You know, when you think about the community up there, you sort of think about it just to the limit of where the high school is. But it goes much further than that. So, would you kind of just enlighten us all as to the depth, how far that goes out? And the, do you know, I don't even know if this is, this is unfair to you to ask.
Oh, that's okay.
Estimate of acreage that's left in it, but I think that would, that's pertinent information, so.
Not only does Estrella go much further south, and there are plans for it to go much further south, but as Councilwoman Loretano spoke of, it's meant to be self-contained, and that's why there is, to the north of here is what's called the North Core Area, and that medical office building is just the beginning of that. The North Core Area goes all around the traffic circle, the Cotton Lane, Estrella Parkway traffic circle. There's, there's more retail, there's more office, there's multi-family, there's even a resort. It's, yeah, there are bigger plans for it to spread out both to the north and to the south with a multitude of uses.
Even down the Estrella Parkway, we're going back north on the west side, I'm understanding, there might be more density placed in there in the future. Is that correct?
That's correct. There would be like village centers that would exist further south. Kind of the same sort of thing would occur further south as well.
Right, and, and so, yeah, yeah, so, and then there's lots of talk about even further than that, so. Councilman Stip, you've been waiting to talk. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay. I just want to make a motion that we amend the special use permit to limit the hours of the drive-through from 12:00 midnight to 4:00 AM. I'm sorry, I'm making a motion from midnight to 12, to 4:00 AM, or, and to last as long as other uses in that shopping center go to 24 hours.
Midnight to 4:00 in the morning, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, 000 to 0400.
Let's have some discussion on that.
I made a motion. You got to have a second before you can discuss it.
All right, do we hear a second?
I'll second, so we can discuss.
Okay, I hear a motion by Councilman Stip and a second by Councilwoman Loretano, open for council discussion.
Well, Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like, I'm okay with limiting them, but I don't want to limit them to midnight. I'd like to do it from 1:00 to 4:00. Only because if there's a football game or a dance, and the dance is over at 10:30 or 11:00, the kids want to go get a bite to eat, that'll give them just one hour to get in and out of there. And you get a bunch of kids in there, and they can't eat in a hurry. And I, because I was with them at Wendy's last night after a show, and we must have had 45 kids that walked in at five minutes of 10:00 because they close at 10:00 o'clock, and they were coming in from a basketball game. And they served them, of course, but, I mean, I just hate to say midnight, but if that's what you want, I mean, I'll go with the majority of the council, but...
Any other discussion?
Well, I chose midnight simply because our curfew, I believe, is 11:00 or 11:30. I'm looking at the police chief.
Oh, we have a curfew at 11:30?
11:00, yeah.
11:00?
So, if we're worried about the kids, that's not necessarily the, the issue. Nope.
Councilman Pizzillo?
Just real quick, McDonald's representative, will that work for you? Midnight.
I'll say, what would be, depending on... Okay, so close from midnight to 4:00 o'clock in the morning.
And the McDonald's representative says it'll work for him.
All right, so when we make this motion, we make it with a motion, with a stipulation. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, you have an amendment, so you need to take a vote on the amendment, which is to limit or restrict the hours between 12:00 and 4:00. They cannot operate the drive-through. Did you also add until such time as another business is 24 hours? I thought you added that.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
That allows us to just move on as the, as the complex moves on.
Exactly. Administratively, it'll just lift the restriction.
Okay, do I need to make that a roll call? I'm sorry, Councilman Loretano?
Well, I was kind of thinking like, well, I didn't realize we had a curfew. I just remember back in the olden days when I used to go out.
Wait till your kids get older.
They're never going anywhere without me, so that's not going to be a problem. I just wondered if that would work on the weekends, or I've seen some times where they do a different hour on the weekends, like the 1:00 on Friday and Saturday nights only, and then the 12:00 the other days. It's your motion.
Yeah, but we're still locked into the, we're still locked into the curfew issue, so.
Well, it's not only children that go to McDonald's late at night.
Correct, but...
I can attest to that, so...
Oh, no, I, yeah, well, I have a lot of hours in front of a McDonald's.
Yeah, so there are other people that do, yeah, and, Councilman Pizzillo?
Mayor, that's the reason why I asked McDonald's if it said it would work for him, and they said yes, so. Apparently, that doesn't seem to be, at least right now, until it gets enough people into the community, that doesn't seem to be a problem.
And it doesn't prohibit them from coming back before us, asking for an extension to 1:00 AM either, does it? No.
All right, so I'd like you just clarify your motion one more time.
Okay, one more time. The motion is to amend the special use permit to allow operation of a drive-through from 4:00 AM until midnight, with, which is restricted use between midnight and 4:00 AM, until such time as the rest of the development complex, however you want to phrase it, starts to create 24-hour operation.
So, we have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, just one question, though. By phrasing it that way, the rest of the development, I could interpret that, that all of them had to be 24 hours. So, would it be until such time as another business begins 24-hour operation?
Yes, I think that's what I said the first time.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, it's hard to repeat it.
Oh, I know.
Okay, all right.
We got it.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilman Stip on the table. I need a second.
It was seconded by...
It was seconded before, but we have a different one now.
No, it's the same one.
All right, come on.
Same, we just restated it. You have a motion, a second.
Just restated, all right, so we have it. So, I would like a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Campbell?
No.
Councilmember Barber?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Nay.
Passes 4 to 2.
All right, very good. Good job, council.
Madam Mayor, now you're back to the main motion.
Now, I'll make a motion that we had, we...
You already have a motion on the floor?
It's my motion.
Oh, we have made a motion.
You just need to move your, back to taking a vote.
Now, do we take, does it have to be amended?
No, you've already amended it.
Okay.
So, we're just voting on this one. Okay, I'd like this one a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barber?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 6-0.
Thank you very much, and thank you to all the speakers that came up this evening. All right, we're ready to go to 7.2. The Intergovernmental Agreement with McDOT for Dynamic Message Signs on MC85. Can we wait just one moment here? Let me repeat that until the audience clears. So, I'll reread this, Intergovernmental Agreement with McDOT for Dynamic Message Signs on MC85 in McDowell Road. I have McDonald's in mind now. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. This evening, I'd like to present to you information regarding dynamic signs. It involves an IGA between the City of Goodyear and Maricopa County, McDOT. In the, in the presentation, I'll refer to these sign units as DMS. First, I wanted to show you a picture of what one of these sign units look like. This is an example of one that's located in the City of Peoria. There are basically two varieties that I'm aware of. This type that you see here, it's a steel pole. It's a rectangular cross-section, involves a pole and then a mast arm. And over on the left, you see the electronic sign portion. We chose this style because it most closely matches the style of our traffic signals in that it's kind of has a rectangular cross-section. One thing I'll point out, and a little later I'll go into a little more detail, we want to work with McDOT to further refine the design to make it even closer, a closer match with our traffic signals, and also to paint it the same color, which is the dark brown. I guess just as a point of interest, there are, currently, there are approximately 60 of these DMS units in the valley. City of Scottsdale is by far in the lead. They have approximately 35 of the 60. Glendale has approximately eight, and then the, the rest of the cities that have them typically have two or three, and quite a few cities don't have any yet. There are, this particular IGA involves five of the DMS units. Four of them are located in the City of Goodyear. One of them is over in the City of Avondale. Two of the five are located on McDowell Road in Goodyear. The other three are along MC85. And two of those three on MC85 are actually within the City of Goodyear. I just wanted to review some project milestones. We began working with, with McDOT on, on this program in 2007. It was based on a MAC study called the I-10 Integrated Corridor Management System, which was developed to manage and reduce congestion in the I-10 corridor. And the, and the study, the 2007 study established seven goals. One goal was to enhance traveler information and to promote awareness among the public about travel conditions. In 2007, Goodyear, McDOT, and Avondale applied for federal funding for this project. It was approved. It was approved approximately for a $1 million project. Since then, Avondale decided not to move forward. Originally, there were six locations approved, when Avondale decided not to move forward, it dropped to the five that we currently have. Recently, the city match, there's a federal portion and then a local match, and on the next slide, we'll show more of the detail. We were able to reduce the local match portion from approximately 30% of the total cost down to about 5% of the total cost. Using ADOT closeout funding that was not utilized in other projects this year. And the construction completion is scheduled to be finished in fiscal year 2013, 2014. I guess it'll be the next slide after this, I'll get to the funding, but the types of messages that would appear on the, on these sign units would include critical transportation messages, such as, as an example, could say, "Crash ahead, left lane closed," that'd be an example. Homeland Security messages, basically connected to elevated security conditions that would come, say, from EOC or through the county, the state, or the feds. Safety messages would be such things as buckle up, or, you know, don't drink and drive. Amber Alerts, I think you're pretty familiar with that. Directional event information, for example, it might read something like, "Event parking, turn right on Bullard Avenue," as an example. There wouldn't be any advertising on this type of message sign, but there could be directional information to get to events. Project cost, project cost about $1 million for five signs. Federal funding, originally, it was $700,000, it's been increased to $943,000 because of the additional use of ADOT closeout money. The local match was decreased from $300,000 to about $57,000. Goodyear's local share match is $22,800, and McDot's local share will be $34,200. It's, as I said, it's programmed in the fiscal year 1314, City Capital Improvement Program, and the local match will be funded through Arterial Street Impact Fees. That's my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, would anybody from the audience that didn't put one in like to speak? Okay, will the city clerk please read the resolution by title only?
Adopt Resolution 13-1536 authorizing the city manager or designee to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Maricopa County Department of Transportation to identify and define the responsibilities of the county and city for the cost-sharing, design, construction, and construction management, and future ownership, maintenance, and operations of dynamic message signs providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Could I ask for a motion, please, in a second?
So moved, second.
I hear a motion from Councilman Pizzillo and a second from Councilman Stip, open for council discussion. Councilman Laura Tonno?
I just have a quick question, I noticed the match from the federal was almost a million dollars. What happens with sequestration, would that be delayed, or would that be cut, Eric? No ideas, I don't know.
Mayor, Councilmember Laura Tonno, as far as I know, there's no, there would be no impact. We have not heard that any of the ADOT-funded projects are impacted.
Okay, I was just wondering, like, we start, and all of a sudden, they don't pay, so what happens?
Well, I think it probably, the future was, definitely.
Yes, it actually is going through design now, and it would be bid after July 1st. And if something should happen to the funding, we would not bid the project. Don't anticipate that happening, however.
Councilman Pizzillo?
First, I appreciate no general funds being used, you got impact fees, so if everything goes well, it's designed for capital projects, you get the city traffic moving, you know, smoothly as a result of notifying individuals where some of the bottlenecks are, and the city's got the small impact on the impact fees, I think it's a good project.
Mayor, I didn't mention this, but I'll add that these signs will be tied into our fiber network, and there will be a connection between City of Goodyear's fiber network and McDot's as well. So, there can be a communication between the two agencies, and basically, all the signs in the valley are, have that concept in mind, where there could be a communication between all of them, through the agencies.
Thank you for that additional information, Councilman Stip?
Stip, how did we come to choose these four particular locations?
The, the two, excuse me, Mayor and Councilmember Stip, the 2007 study, based on the I-10 corridor, it identified some critical east-west corridors, including McDowell, MC85, even Van Buren. And they were identified because, in the case of congestion on I-10, typically, it's the adjacent east-west parallel streets that are impacted the most. So, that was the connection between the I-10 corridor and these arterials that run fairly close to I-10 in the same direction.
Yeah, which, I get Litchfield Road then, but MC85, it seems to be so far removed from really the traffic pattern. Even if 10 gets blocked, you know, jammed up, people are going to Litch, are going to McDowell, or they're going down to Van Buren to go east and west, they're not taking that travel all the way down to MC85. And if we're able to use these to guide folks, it would seem to me that Van Buren would be a better selection, because we can point them down to Bullard to get them toward the ballpark, et cetera, where there's very little advantage to the city, now maybe I'm missing something, so, by having it done at MC85.
I think it goes back to the 2007 study that also identified MC85, and then when the, when the project was formulated, we were working in cooperation with McDot, and MC85 is a primary McDot corridor, so that, that's, I think that was the connection, where they, it drew them into the, into the project with Avondale and Goodyear at that time.
Okay, thanks.
Although the future looks like there'll be another form of, well, how about the I-11? Is deemed to be connected to MC85, am I right in that assessment of it? So, in actuality, it will be quite a busy fairway.
Sure.
Mayor, I think, and Councilmember Stip, I think there'll be opportunities in the future to, to submit for additional funding for more of these signs, for example, on Van Buren, this is the first one that we were able to do here in Goodyear.
Right, great, thank you very much for your presentation. Okay, council discussion is finished?
Yes.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tonno?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Barber?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes six zero.
Okay, before we go to the information items, I just want to remind you that we'll have a special meeting after this meeting, okay? So, council, it's up to you, communications, anybody have anything I'd like to talk about this evening?
I have some pictures.
Councilwoman Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor and council, I would like to give a quick, brief overview of our library, if I may. We just had a meeting, as you know, I'm serving as president of Friends of the Library, and we are in the process of planning some floor space. For our library, which currently has 1,797 square feet of space, the number of items in collection is 15,987 items. They circulated 140,502 items from July of 2012 until January of this year. We have had 69 library programs. Of those, the Friends of the Library has sponsored the majority of them and paid for them out of book sales. The program attendance at our 69 programs, I'm sorry, yeah, the program attendance is 2,513. Volunteer hours is 96, and that's kind of low, because we have such little space in our library, we can't have more than one volunteer at a time in there, because we run into each other. Our summer reading program, we had 864 youngsters that participated in it. And our gate count, which was the number of visitors to the library from July until January, was 52,677 patrons. The percentage of self-checkouts, meaning people who use the machine to check out the books themselves, was 83%. So, I can just imagine what the numbers are going to be when we move the library to a bigger space. So, I thought you might like to have that.
And people are trying to tell us they don't use libraries anymore, just for the computers, so I said that... Who else would like to be next? You're good?
Oh, I have one more thing, I'm so sorry.
Yes, yes.
Oh, and I promised to do this, and I apologize, I want to thank our youth commission for putting the video together on Vote Goodyear. Lanny went to them, and the youth commission themselves came up with the idea of what they wanted to say in the video, they came up with the box, and they came up with where they wanted to be filmed on location. And if you've not seen that video, you are missing an Emmy performance, it is absolutely awesome. And I just think our youth commission is so creative, and I would like, Rob, you and Matt, to thank the commission for doing this for the city, it's an excellent presentation.
That's it? Well, I think you're, anybody else? Okay, have we had some pretty good events here this week? I'm not satisfied with what you've talked about tonight, so, yeah, we had, let's hear some of the events, and the little...
We had, Councilmember Barber, the mayor, Councilmember Campbell, myself attended the Cactus League kickoff. That was a, that was very amazing. To hear the statistics about Cactus, the Cactus League, and what it brings into our valley from an economic development standpoint is huge, and it was actually very refreshing to hear the positive outlook as it was, as it was being presented as we entered this new season, so that was great. It was great to see our own Nathan Torres up there as the, on the board of directors for the Cactus League. It's a great honor for our city. We had spring training kickoff, I'm at our own ballpark, great attendance, it was great dedication for the Wood family. Was hoping that perhaps we'd get an opportunity to at least post that up on the website. The dedication thing for the Wood family, that was, it was very nice, and I think a lot of folks are, don't understand the contribution that, and the sacrifice that that family has made for that ballpark in our city, so that was wonderful. I'll leave the rest to someone else.
Okay, anybody else, any comments? Councilman Laura Tonno?
I'll just add on a different one, not to repeat, the Westmark meeting to show about the economic conditions where they're going, and the arrows are pointing up, so I was very happy to be able to have, to attend that, so... That, it looks good for our city, and it couldn't go down for the last few years, so it's really nice to see everything pointing in the right direction, especially for the West Valley.
Great. Councilmember Barber?
I would like to add, the Cactus League lunch, I was so impressed with the showing from Goodyear. And I think it really said something about our commitment to the Cactus League, and how much we want this to be successful in our city, and, you know, I think it was great that staff showed up, I think it really sent a statement, and I was very, very impressed. And the charity game, I must say, was on Friday, and the proceeds went to Arizona in Action and the Homeless Youth Connection. And just being a board member, a volunteer board member, thank you. Thank you to Nathan, thank you to the city, that is our livelihood. And it was a fantastic event, and we're extremely fortunate to have this opportunity in our city, so thank you.
Great, well, I'd like to thank all the volunteers on both of those days that came forth and gave their time to make both events very, very successful. And it was, it was a good opening day, and it was very emotional. And it was nice to see that, for people that weren't there and that are listening, we, the Cincinnati Reds and the Cleveland Indians, and donated four permanent seats for the Wood family, lifetime seats, will be transending to their, to their children and their children's children, so I thought it was a very wonderful tribute to them. I'm just going to mention a couple of things, you know, it's nice that we're seeing healthcare coming into our city, and we have another one. I went to the Australia Women's Healthcare Grand Opening on Australia Parkway. I spent time and went through the facility and talked to the doctors, and so it's just another, it's just another advantage for our citizens in the middle, the central part of the city, to have that service, and I thought, I enjoyed that. And you didn't mention the science fair, I can't believe it, we all attended a science fair, and we did the judging at the Centerra Mirage School, and it was, it was quite a task, and those children spent a great deal of time producing those exhibits. And so, was it third grade to the, what, was it third to eighth, is that what it was? And so, it was three pages of paperwork in order to choose which one of the students won, and I never heard the results, so we need to check into that, so that we can announce some of the results of that. But when they say education is not working in Goodyear or in our schools in the area, it really is, if you saw the display, you know the dedication of the teachers and the classrooms and the students, so I was very, very pleased to say, to see that. So, I think we'll turn this over to our city manager for follow-up.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Follow-up, we will be putting information on our website, we do have a website specific to the Goodyear ballpark, it's GoodyearBP, short for ballpark.gov. So, as items happen, as events happen, and certainly the Wood family happenings, we will be posting as follow-up. I do have a couple of announcements as well, and that is, is looking back at the weekend. We had nearly 11,000 fans in attendance for opening weekend, Friday through Sunday, so that was a good turnout. I do want to follow up on Councilmember Barber's comment on the charity game. The charity game is, it was between the Reds and the Indians, they put, they give up their portion of revenues, it actually goes to the charities, so it is not city dollars, if you will. And what that did is that raised 32, about $32,000, un-audited right now, but what we're finding is $32,000. By comparison, last year, that was about $30.7,000. So, $32,000, you divide that by both charities, again, for the Homeless Youth Connection and Arizona in Action, that's $16,000 per. So, that, that's a good number, absolutely will benefit those charities, so thanks to the teams, thanks to the fans. Saturday, we, we had some giveaways and things like that that went on with the, really, our, what we call our opening day. Saturday, we did have a lot of different activities, and thank you to the mayor and council for being there. And some of the things we're doing, just to try and bring in fans to the ballpark, for example, the first thousand fans, they receive Lucky Fives, scratch and win tickets, and they have an opportunity to win free concession items, team shop merchandise, et cetera. So, it's things to really try and bring interest for fans getting there early. They get there early, they eat a lot. Also, the first 300 fans get a pre-game autograph session, and that's also big, as they come out and get the signatures from the baseball players representing both teams. Sunday, again, some of the same things that we had going on, special events and things, we, the weather didn't totally cooperate, but nonetheless, we did have baseball. I do want to point out a couple of things, and it will be coming up again on Wednesday, March 6. It is the Canada, Canadian National Team will play the Reds in an exhibition game, and this leads up to the World Baseball Classic. Canadian flags will be distributed to the first thousand fans. Evening will include Canadian culinary delights and beverages, as well as trivia and a lot of other things as well. So, we're excited about that, that's kind of a heads up coming up March 8. And March 9 is something that's a little bit different, and this will all be posted on the website. Something called Superstars, they'll perform five times throughout the game in between innings, and it's just really a parody, if you will, on different names, for example, it has Monkey Mantle, and Ken Giraffe, and those types of folks, but it's things to get the kids, it really is about getting the families out there. So, you can see staff is trying to get some more information out to them, and certainly generate... generate the interest. There are a lot of other activities that will be going on throughout spring training, we'll get those posted and out to you, as well as on the website. That's all I have for tonight in terms of just follow-up, but again, it was a good weekend for us. Thank you.
Great. Any other inquiries? Councilman Basillo?
Just a quick comment, just a suggestion there, Brian. I know we're going through a lot of issues right now with our state legislature and construction sales tax, a couple of other issues that are dear to our heart. And I know some of that stuff, when you go to the website, goes to government, et cetera, but, but just a thought, to see maybe under Hot Topics, because that's such a critical issue for us as we go forward, if maybe we have a button out there that goes right there at Hot Topics, so when they put it, pull it up, what's going on at the state legislature that impacts you directly, the citizen, that they could click on that, and then without having to search anything, it goes right to all of our messages to our citizens, so they don't have to look for it. It's right there at the front, you know, when they open it up under Hot Topics. So to me, it's so critical with what's going on down there, that I think, the easier we can get our citizens to find that link, I think the better it will be for us.
I think Litchfield Park is doing that, somebody else is doing it, I just read that.
But under Hot Topics, I mean, it just, you see it when you first open it up, and it's so important, because if we lose some of those battles going on down there, it could be devastating to us, so.
And links to their email addresses.
Yes, yeah, and links to their email address, which would even be nice, yeah. Just a thought.
It's absolutely something that we're, we'll look at. We're also preparing some information for council as it relates to some of the legislation that's ongoing, so you're well-prepared to talk about it as well.
Are we allowed to have you just verbally explain to the public what this is, this particular item that we're talking about? I'm looking to the lawyer on that. Well.
You are noted for update on legislative issues.
And Mayor, what I like to do is, if Romina's in the audience, is she still here? If she could address that, we'd call upon her.
I really appreciate that. Isn't it nice, we're allowed to do this? We actually can really say something for once that we really want to say. This is extremely important to our city, and we are going to be losing a lot of funds, funds that we should not be losing. So, Romina, if you will, sort of give kind of a quick briefing on what it is.
Mayor, sorry, it is Cannonet Show, I went by her former name, so just for the audience, it is Cannonet Show.
I didn't even hear you, so that's okay. Good evening, Mayor and council. Just give me a quick second, I need to pull up the talking points on my iPad that we had prepared. You'll be getting this sheet tomorrow as soon as we complete the final numbers. John Casella is working on, I can't get it up here, he's looking on the numbers that are going to show you what the actual impacts are, and so I don't have those right here in front of me, I'm trying to get them off my iPad. But there are a lot of moving parts to this bill, there are amendments that are being looked at, there are different scenarios from different members of the, both House and the Senate with respect to.
If you just give the name of the bill.
It's the transportation, or, it's the transaction privilege tax. It's House Bill twenty-six fifty-seven is the actual number of the bill. And so what it does currently is, it does a number of things, most, the most difficult one and the one that we're stuck on is the construction sales tax. I think we can work through the other two pieces, which are the auditing, but the construction sales tax really just moves it so that it's at a point of sale. And what that means is, we don't, we're not able to have a construction sales tax in its current form. And so that could, for us, in the Goodyears, was around twenty-two million dollars, and currently, we're estimating about six million we would lose as a city. There are no cities currently at this point that are even remotely close to cutting a deal or doing anything. It hurts every city, big and small, equally. I know there's some discussion about there, about where other cities stand, everybody's uniform on where we stand on this. There are ongoing discussions with the governor's office with specific mayors that she's invited to the table. There are discussions with both leaderships of the House and the Senate, there are discussions with chairman, it is inactive, there's nobody that's not turning every single stone we can to figure out how to handle this. The business community is also at the table with respect to numbers. Like I said, every legislator is now asking for what those impacts are to our communities, we are giving them those actual numbers coming out of our finance departments and explaining how those work. And in addition, we are going to be putting together a list of projects as an example of what we do to fund those, what we use those funds for, so that it hits home on what it would mean if we lost that money.
Just for the public, if you could just enlighten them what we use those for, because when everybody says construction sales tax, I think more like a tax, or, you know, general taxes, and it's not. What do we, just sort of give them a view of what we use them for?
Most of our stuff, we found, and this is very preliminary, because we're still looking through the CIP, but most of the preliminary stuff is really for infrastructure, a lot of it has been for streets. We're looking to see if there is any major projects that we can highlight in our efforts, but we have been telling them that we use them for one-time expenses. That's what the city of Goodyear uses in form, they're one-time projects.
And for growth, right?
For growth, yes. It pays for growth. Absolutely. This is growth paying for itself, which was a philosophy that the state had taken on through our growing years, which is now sort of, that's where we're backtracking to. And so a lot of these, a lot of these monies, most of our monies, all of our monies are used for that purpose. We're trying to kind of show them what those projects look like, where those streets are, what they, where they go to, I think will help a lot of our legislators better understand why these monies are so important to us, because this would be then paid for by our general fund, so it would be, current residents would be paying for growth, rather than growth paying for itself. So there's a lot going on.
Yeah, so basically, a community is open, a master plan community is open in Goodyear. So, you know, that entails density, so that's more people, and more cars on the road, entails building schools, I mean, and we do have some of the infrastructure surrounding the schools. So everything that happens, happens because the population increases. So rather than tax your people who are already purchased homes that are there, then it's the developers that, essentially, developers slash builders, that are taxed this per home.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes. And I think the important thing to mention here is, there is some discussion about what it would be like if they doubled our state shared revenue, that's kind of what they're talking about right now. We're literally talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we would lose millions. And so that's not even an equivalent, it doesn't even make up a percentage that's even countable.
Well, the other point I'd like to make is, if so, that is, you know, shared revenue, but has, the legislature on occasion has limited our shared revenue or held it back, is that correct? So they have.
They have not, they've tried.
They have the jurisdiction over it, though.
They do have the, yes, they do have the ability to do that, they have tried to do that, but they have not been successful in the past. But there's always the threat that the shared revenue formula would change with cities, and that's an ongoing threat that we deal with every single year.
That's right. Yes, Councilman Stip?
And then, sorry, none of this is taken into consideration that a trainload, literally, of lumber that comes from Oregon, purchased in Oregon, none of that tax revenue comes to the state of Arizona.
They have discussed those items, the state is, would lose significantly under this. I think the cities obviously are the most to lose, but the state does lose revenue as well, because most of that stuff is coming from out of state, yes. When you're talking about larger steel projects, any kind of construction projects, most of the developers are using companies that are outside of the state of Arizona. So the state has that to lose as well.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other comments? Thank you so much for enlightening us, we appreciate that. Before we go, could I call Matt up? I've been told today, of course, that you are celebrating a birthday.
Yes, Mayor.
You have lots of birthdays to go, but our council wanted to make sure that we publicly wish you a happy birthday. You've been a great addition to Goodyear, you have been a great resource for this council, and you just keep improving every day, and so we greatly appreciate it. So they wanted to present you with a happy birthday token, and they decided they wanted it in public. You're welcome. You're welcome. Since there is no further discussion, I will remind you, there'll be a meeting on March eighteenth, a work session at five, a regular section at six. And we are going to adjourn this meeting, but then we're going to go into a special meeting, all right? Meeting adjourned.